Good evening. Welcome to the January 25th School Committee Meeting for the Town of Foxborough. I do want to acknowledge that Sarah Ladani is attending virtually, so she is via Zoom, and then Richard Pearson is not able to join us this evening. So, as always, we open our meeting with open public comment. I did notice that there is nobody signed up for today's evening. We do have several members. Joe, did you sign up? I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm just saying, well, it's the first time in a while.
We always welcome participation at our meetings, but we will move forward from that because no one did sign up for that portion of the agenda this evening. Second on the agenda is the approval of minutes. So we have the minutes from the January 11th meeting. Did anybody have any questions, comments, or edits to those minutes?
No.
No? Okay, so hearing, seeing none?
I move to accept the January 11th minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm the only one that can be seconded. Actually, point of order, we can't do this because we don't, both you, Sarah and Michelle, have to abstain from voting, so we need to actually defer this since Richard's not here this evening. We won't have a majority on this. Is that correct?
Say it again, Sarah.
So because Michelle and Sarah were not at the meeting, they can't vote on the minutes? And Richard was not, is not here tonight, so...
They can't vote on the minutes. It only makes it a record.
Okay.
They can't vote on the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank goodness you're here. I say that for so many reasons, but thank goodness you're here.
They're able to.
Okay.
A lot of people don't, but they're able to.
Okay, thank you very much. So you are able to vote on the minutes? So Brent has motioned, I'll second it. All in favor of the minutes from January 11th? Four, zero, zero?
Yep.
Good math for me, yeah. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Teaching and Learning Highlight. Dr. Burris and Dr. Mello, would either one of you like to do the setup for this, please?
I would love to.
Terrific.
So we are very excited tonight to have our digital learning coaches, Darlene Reed, Tara Nathan, and Dan Ambrosio, if you could come up to the table. You may remember, we talked about in the summer, previously their title was Technology Integration Specialist, and we shifted it to Digital Learning Coach. As we have moved to one-to-one, we really know how the technology can be such a great lever for supporting teaching and learning, which is why they are a Teaching and Learning Highlight. They're going to share with us some of the ways they've been supporting teachers in using technology, both for teaching and learning and for parent communication. So without further ado, I will just point out that Darlene works with our elementary levels. Tara joined us this year, and she works with our high school. And Dan works with our middle school and also oversees our project Lead the Way too as well. So, thank you all. I'm sure you have a whole plan of how you're going to do it, so I'll let you go.
Thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to show you what we do. So this past Friday, Tara and I actually had the opportunity to present some professional development to our teachers. The session was called Universal Design for Learning in Inclusive Classrooms, or UDL. And this was part of a Get What You Need from MTSS portion of the day. So in the afternoon, teachers got to choose their sessions on exactly what they needed to help themselves. So I can't help but think about my first professional development in this district way back in 2015. And that session was literally a point and click on how to use a OneNote notebook. So when I think back to that and think about how far we've come, I can't help to reflect on how far our teachers, their digital skills, and the pedagogies have come in that time. So to give some context of UDL and how it fits into our strategic goals for teaching and learning, I thought it would be a good idea to start with looking at our new Plan for Success. So our Plan for Success has four pillars for success. As you can see here, Darlene and I were fortunate enough to be a part of the Planning for Success process. We were doing our work in the Teaching, Learning, and Pedagogy Group. The Planning for Success process was a collaborative effort that saw educators from across the district come together, collaborate, and lay out goals for our future. So let's take a closer look at the Teaching, Learning, and Pedagogy pillar. So from this pillar, the strategic objective for Teaching, Learning, and Pedagogy is to provide opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common equitable learning experiences. So from that objective, or with that objective, we created a strategic goal, and that was to develop and implement a district-wide, consistent, multi-tiered system of support to ensure equitable opportunities for all learners. Now, using the UDL framework, teachers are able to remove barriers from the learning in the instructional phase. Now, removing these barriers proactively in the planning phase goes a long way from needing to provide differentiated support later on in instruction. So it builds that solid foundation for instruction for all learners. Now, two of our elementary schools have already begun this work with UDL. They've started a UDL Academy with Dr. Katie Novak, and part of her work, a lot of her work, went into our presentation to teachers, which we also gave them a website to use going forward to continue their work with UDL. So what you might be thinking now is, you know, what the heck is this UDL framework? And how does it help teachers produce equitable opportunities for all learners? So Tara's going to help explain exactly what it is and how it can accomplish just that.
All right, thank you. I'm going to steal that clicker from you.
Why don't you just slide the mic over?
Oh, yep.
Thanks.
All right. Hi, everyone. Again, I'm Tara Nathan. I'm the DLC at the high school. I just finished my first semester with the high school, and I'm really happy to be here, and I'm really happy to meet you all. So to just kind of jump right in, you know, what is MTSS? What is UDL? So as educators, we are, you know, engaging with a lot of different teaching and learning frameworks and methodologies to continue evolving and pushing our instruction to new places. So I want to kind of take a moment to kind of contextualize these two central frameworks for you all, those two being, as Dan said, multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, and Universal Design for Learning, or UDL. So MTSS is sort of a school-wide approach. It is a holistic educational framework that expresses sort of the scope and scalability of equity through three tiers of student intervention and assessment. And we'll go into that a little bit more in just a second. So it's sort of the broader school-wide approach. It calls administrators, teachers, library media specialists, digital learning coaches, counselors, psychologists, any other support faculty sort of into that conversation and drive towards equity for students. And to kind of help you kind of understand the difference here, Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, is an instructional, it's an instruction-focused framework that can operate sort of under that broader MTSS framework, sort of as an ingredient in the recipe for MTSS. UDL is founded on the premise of learner variability. And this is sort of the idea that our students have so many different learning styles, learning needs, and our instruction should reflect that. And how does it reflect that? So UDL's emphasis is on student choice and student voice, and that's sort of the shorthand for that variability that we just talked about. But also sort of the idea that you can develop your sense of self as a learner, right? So you can, if I can be an expert on my own learning needs, if I can be, if I'm able to exercise that choice, you know, when I'm learning to meet those needs, this is what we kind of talk about when we talk about cultivating expert learners. How do we develop students to be the best agents of their own learning? So UDL kind of, excuse me, focuses on the what and the how of instruction in order to create a strong Tier One foundation in the MTSS model. And as you can see in this next graphic here, that MTSS Tier One Foundation represents that core instruction. So you can kind of see how these are positioned here. Again, UDL kind of can be positioned within that first tier. And sort of what UDL and differentiated instruction, which can kind of, we can kind of talk about as a different thing from UDL as well, sort of where they land in the teaching and learning cycle here. So UDL requires teachers to sort of front-load that in that planning phase, designing learning experiences to be choice and voice-oriented. That takes a lot of planning on the front end. While differentiated instruction also embraces that learner variability that we talked about, but it occurs more in the improvement phase, where teachers are kind of auditing the lessons or the projects that they've deployed already to make, you know, future renditions of that improved upon. So shameless plug for Dan, Darlene, and I here, these are great places for us to come in, right? The planning and the improvement phase, we can kind of help them with that audit, we can kind of help them, you know, understand what's worked, what's not worked, what needs to be improved upon. And it can kind of be a really effective and informal intervention where we're able to kind of be a sounding board and a launching pad for those ideas. So I want to kind of emphasize here that there's sort of a symbiotic relationship between these frameworks and our one-to-one technology initiative. While all students are able to have, or excuse me, when all students are able to have access to these digital public domains, media-making tools, information databases, there are pathways towards reaching curriculum standards and building, you know, 21st century competencies in digital spaces sort of multiply. So one-to-one really provides teachers with an expanse of learning materials and resources to teach content. And one-to-one provides students with that, an expanse of possibilities to collaborate with their peers, demonstrate their knowledge in different formats, express themselves, conduct research, and become expert learners. So the frameworks kind of thrive with one-to-one, and one-to-one is sort of a lever for the UDL and the MTSS frameworks. And lastly, I just wanted to give you a quick look at the guidelines for UDL. So you can see at the top here, the three columns represent those three kind of pillars of engagement, representation, and action and expression. And right above it, you know, we want multiple means for these things, right? So ultimately, success means we're getting towards the bottom of this model, where we kind of reach the goals. But what I do want to kind of draw our attention to in the middle, we've got all these different guidelines and all these different ways that we can have engagement, representation, and action. That first band is access. And again, just drawing that line between our one-to-one initiative and that sort of being the gateway to all this other stuff. And this is definitely an interesting thing to kind of take a look at if you have time in the future, but definitely kind of answers the questions of how do we remove the barriers that Dan was talking about for classrooms full of our variable learners? We have to engineer these options kind of through the guidelines. So I want to toss this back to Dan, and he's going to kind of talk a little bit more about one-to-one and the Equity by Design frameworks, how they work together in other school environments.
Yeah, and you can imagine, when we have teachers, we got teachers into this framework, and when you access it online, all of the guidelines and checkpoints are all interactive, so teachers can click on any of those research-based strategies, those checkpoints to learn more about it and how they implement it. It's definitely a lot for teachers to take in, I would say, in a one-hour session. We just try to pique their interest in these things. So Tara spoke about the UDL framework, instructional planning with equity in mind. If we dig into instructional equity here in Foxborough, we see the following digital drivers of design that are made possible by our one-to-one initiative. The first being curriculum collaboration. And if you've been here a while, you've seen this kind of morph and evolve over the years, where it used to be someone's Word document on their desktop, and now it's a collaborative thing that's continually updated. And more importantly, everyone has access to it. So now all stakeholders in the MTSS system can go in and look at pacing guides, curriculum maps, and things like that to see where they can support students and teachers. Secondly, our data warehouse and assessment system. Obviously, teachers, great teachers, love to look at their data, right? And use it as information to improve themselves in their teaching. So I feel like we're doing a good job of getting that data in there, and then in a timely manner accessing that data to see, you know, what we can find out from that data. Adaptive learning has really taken off, especially K through 8 with Freckle, and then obviously Alex is a math adaptive map tool in our upper grades. And lastly is our universal screener. Right now is fast bridge, so, you know, identifying those students early on and being able to take action and respond to those needs quickly. So that wraps up the secondary portion, and I'm going to pass it over to Darlene to give us an update on elementary.
So hi, and again, I'm Darlene Reed, the DLC for the elementary level, and my presentation is a little bit of a shift from secondary. So some highlights from elementary that we have to share with you tonight include, if we could just pull over, thanks, the adoption of our new online platform, Seesaw, and ways that we are using that platform. I'll do a quick check-in on our one-to-one program and what that looks like this year at elementary. And then something that we are excited about is a new student tech committee that we are piloting at IGO this year. So I'll quickly share that. Okay, thanks. So starting with Seesaw. Seesaw is an online platform that we have purchased as a replacement to our previous online learning management system, Agilix Buzz. So it offers much of the same functionality that we had there, and that teachers are able to use the platform to create activities for their students to complete through the platform. Students have access to all kinds of tools to use, and this all happens in a very user-friendly, age-grade-appropriate interface, which is something new for us compared to Buzz. And Seesaw, though, is also widely known for the way it supports that homeschool connection, which has been our focus for use this current school year. So with this platform, we're able to send out family announcements, maybe it's an upcoming play, or just a little reminder that, hey, Friday is PJ Day. So they can also create messages and send them out to individual family members that are private messages. And also, they have access to built-in tools in Seesaw that allow them to capture those exciting learning moments happening in the classroom through maybe a picture or a video that they can post directly to student journals. And parents and students have access to those posts, and it gives parents a nice little window into their child's, you know, day in school. Another feature that we have with Seesaw is the way it translates. So if the family is, you know, speaks multiple languages, and the target machine is in a program for a different language, for example, Seesaw will translate that message into the language that they're working with. So using Seesaw in this way streamlines parent access to these communications from elementary teachers. They no longer have to maybe browse multiple classroom websites, depending on the number of elementary students they have in the system. They don't have to, you know, scroll through email. Everything is in this one single website. Or even more conveniently, they can access it through the Seesaw Family App, and they get a little notification when something new has been posted, which is really nice. So regarding the platform's features for teaching and learning, we will be piloting this functionality this spring. And with that, students will be able to extend their hands on learning by capturing and reflecting on their work in their student journals and/or responding to universally designed lessons that have been shared with them by their teacher in the platform. So Seesaw offers teachers different ways to display information for students, a variety of formats. They can present information through video, they can add an audio recording, they can do a, create a screen recording with markup. For the instructions, they can add voice or multimedia instructions and also give timely feedback using similar tools. For students, students are able to compose a response also using multiple media. They can create a screen recording of themselves solving a math problem, or maybe recording themselves doing a poem read aloud and use the playback features to playback and self-assess their fluency. They can use digital inking tools to show the beginning, middle, and end of a story. So they have choice of tools to show what they have learned in a way that is best for them, and they are able to develop a wider range of expression. And then moving into our one-to-one program, which supports this. With our one-to-one, of course, our K through 12 students are assigned their own devices at elementary. Those devices are in school this year. Each classroom is equipped with a charging station. Beginning with kindergarten, students are introduced to the devices with a lesson on how to properly care for the devices and handle them properly. And once they show that they understand these guidelines, they are afforded a, or awarded a laptop driver's license. So we also use Clever, a single sign-on portal, which has really been a game changer at elementary, giving them much more, quick access to all these great learning tools that we have here in the district. So that has increased time on learning. And then here, we see students using their devices for writing informative text, listening to story read-alouds, and they'll start in key story elements using the device's digital inking tools and the pencil-touch technology. So even as digital natives, oftentimes our elementary students are using these tools for the first time. So with ready access to this technology with our one-to-one program, it increases their exposure and helps to build that digital fluency, so the technology becomes increasingly invisible and focus then is shifted more to the learning objective. And then when embedded tools and supports are familiar, they start to be utilized in a way that really increases student agency and student independence, which is really empowering to our young learners. And then lastly, our Student Technology Committee. So this committee is a group of 30 4th graders at the IGO Elementary School, and the mission for the committee is to, is that through club-based activities, students will develop a sense of community and leadership while expanding digital proficiency. Here, whoop, sorry, I'm going to catch up. So our first topic of choice was for green screening, which inspired a great deal of student collaboration and creativity. We are now delving into coding, and this is really, they're employing those problem-solving and computational skills which translate nicely into the areas of the curriculum. And here, we have students involved in coding using the code.org site, so they're coding games here. They were first introduced to coding by writing algorithms for programming these little B-Bot robots that we have. And it's been nice to see as these activities have become increasingly challenging, just the level of perseverance that they demonstrate with this. So we have quick little, I was able to capture, I think we have, just a quick little video. If you can play it, it's short, it's okay if it doesn't run. Okay, but anyway, that is just a quick little video clip I had.
There goes.
So there they are, they're writing their algorithms, and they were trying to, working on this code for a while, and all of a sudden, he jumps up because they got it. It was just awesome. And I had my, you know, camera ready. It was like, oh, gosh, that was so, so awesome.
And did you, did you put that on Seesaw once you captured it?
No, but I need to, I need to share that. That's a, that's a good thing. And then also, there has been, with this club, great interest in, you know, becoming student technology leaders for the school. So they've already applied their new skills in supporting grade-level peers with green screening and coding. So now we will be focusing on building capacity to support peers in a broader range of projects. They will be, after they demonstrate mastery of digital literacy standards, and they will gain further status as a school's technology leaders, so.
Wow, that's fantastic.
So we're speechless, which doesn't happen for me very often. Michelle can attest to that.
That's true.
So Brent, Michelle, any questions or...
Yeah.
Brent?
Sure.
Or Sarah, sorry. Forgot.
We're all staring at her.
So when it comes to the Seesaw, when did we start employing that?
We started in, back in September.
Cool, so that's early. But do you happen to know if there's any, yet any data or anecdotal accounts of the breadth of those various presentation tools that teachers are using across the district, you know, when it comes to the multimedia? Because I'm happy to have the functionality, but do you have any sense yet as to the uptake of those various skills as it's being employed in the classroom?
Nothing major. We are really about to start our pilot, getting students in there, utilizing those, that large variety of tools available to them. So we will probably have some, you know, some kind of idea of that by the end of the year.
So we started primarily in the fall with using it as a means for parent communication.
Great.
And having teachers get parents used to, that this is a place to go and see things. And now the next phase is to pilot it with teachers and getting them to use them. We don't want to inundate parents with too many messages. I was a, I was a pretend student last year, and I saw what that felt like, so we put some fences around how many posts parents are seeing per week. So right now, as we try this, it will just be F for classroom use, and then we'll see where we go with sharing those things with parents.
Thank you. And then follow-up. At the secondary level, as we move into the UDL, do you yet have either anecdotal or a hard sense of the uptake of really employing that voice and choice through having a variety of ways that students can show what they know as part of the way they assess in the classroom?
Yeah, definitely. I had a couple examples. I didn't want to go too long, so I'm so glad you asked. Yeah, so a couple examples that I just brought with me today, this is like the most recent project that I finished with a teacher, and then one I'm like right in the middle of right now. So we'll see how that pans out, but it seems like it's going well so far. So I'm working with ELA teacher Kelly Bishop, or I just finished working with her on this project. So she had been, she had been having students in her creative writing class just write a compulsory, like, exposatory creative writing piece, and it was loosely based on a fairy tale. She said it was like, they weren't super, not that they weren't super into it, but it's an exposatory piece, you know, if you don't thrive in that space, that might not be your jam, you know? So she kind of was wanting to give them options, give them more options. So what we kind of came up with to pilot this past, just at the end of last quarter, we had them choose their own, like, classic fairy tale, and then they had to choose ways in which they wanted to modernize it. So they looked at the setting, characterizations, different plot points. We had a lot of students saying like, I don't want it to be a happy ending, or whatever, you know? So they got to like choose these things, and then they created a digital storyboard. Some of them used Canva, some of them used, a couple used PowerPoint, one used Whiteboard. So they created like digital storyboards, and then within that, they had like little clickable, they had three clickable digital artifacts, and that led you to three separate artifacts that they made, and they used like a variety, quite a variety of tools. Some of them used Snapchat filters, because this gives you the opportunity to, you know, use an apple and place like eyes and a mouth on it, and all of a sudden, you're personifying this apple, and they can, this apple can have a conversation with people. So some of them used, you know, different things like that to kind of, to represent the modernized changes that they made. And it was really fun. They had a lot of fun with it. They worked in groups of like, some of them had three, some of them had four. But they had a lot of fun with that. We had sort of a presentation day at the end where we all kind of got to see what everybody made. It was very fun. And this, it seemed like they were engaging with both a lot of communications, media literacy type things, they're like, understanding different ways of communicating and using literary devices in modern technological ways. You know, they're doing this all the time, right? They're like, they're making Snapchat stories, they're making TikToks, but thinking critically about the literary purposes of this and like digital storytelling is something that we want them to think more about and think about consciously. So that was very cool. And then the second one that I'm in the middle of right now, and I'm curious to see how this comes out, is my social studies teacher, Dan Grady, wanted his students to engage in a bit more of like peer, like reflection kind of with his Gettysburg Address speech project. So instead of having them do a traditional stand-up in front of the class speech at the end, we are having students... we are having students use Flipgrid. So they can record, they're sort of performing their, their speech. So there's like, you know, there's a little bit of delivery and style. And they're, they're studying different, different types of rhetorical strategies and things that kind of go into this. And then they get to make some choices as far as like, you know, what do I want my backdrop to be? What do I want, you know, do I want, some, some kids don't want to show their face. So, okay, I'm gonna put this, you know, I'm gonna mediate this message with, you know, a character, something like that. So and then when it comes time to, for like sort of the delivery, they'll all, will have like a feed full of speeches. They're gonna get into groups. They'll kind of review their peers' speeches. And they'll talk about things like, you know, what choices did this person make that I didn't make? You know, what perspectives did they engage with? What strategies did they engage with and that kind of thing? So I'm excited about these things, yeah. These are, these are two that I was particularly excited about, so I wanted to share this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's going, it seems like it's going well, though.
Brent, anything else? Sarah, any questions or, okay. Michelle?
No, I, I, I think it's all great. It's really interesting to see how things are being applied into the different levels. And I think it's all great for students to be exposed, as well as the teachers, to be exposed to all these different applications and how they can be integrated into the teaching styles. Because it really does, it seems like it opens up a lot of opportunity, which is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grace and Jacob, are you guys being, are you guys taking advantage of any of this stuff? How has it changed your perspective on what you're doing in the classroom, if at all?
Well, like, just going back to those solutions that we were just talking about, some of my friends are in that creative writing class. And, you know, we talk about like what happens in our classes. And you could just like tell that they were more excited and put more effort into it once they've like were able to enjoy it more. Like, they, like, they were showing me their projects and they were like, they were pretty cool.
They were fun. We were, we were laughing a lot the day that everybody showed up. Because, you know, some of them are invoking like modern TikTok trends or modern trends that are happening, you know, online. And then they're using them in like a, you know, a sophisticated way to tell stories. And, but we were, we were having good laughs about it, too, so that was fun.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that. It's really nice to hear.
Jacob, is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I can definitely say the variation in projects and just general opportunities in class that this allows is like very useful, because rather than sticking to one thing and having it just shared throughout the class, we can like personalize the projects in, in a way. And that really lets a lot of expression get through. And that's pretty cool.
And analysis. So you guys must be the coolest people in every single one of your buildings. Like, without a doubt, like, I'm blown away by this, so excited. I could spend the rest of the night like, like, listening and watching and learning from you guys what you're doing and what's going on, because it's incredible. I'm really excited, one, I want to know where freckle comes from, because I kind of like the pig. I would love to know what that, like, what's behind that. But we will say that for a different time, because I know we have a bigger role with the agenda. But what I'm really going to be fascinated to watch is as these kids are getting introduced so early at the elementary level, what is this changing for, as they move up into the secondary level? And what that expands for them, based on what they're getting exposure to now? Versus like, no offense to either Jacob or Grace, right? You guys didn't have the advantage of some of this back when you were in elementary school. Imagine where you'd be with your interactivity and your creativity and your analytical skills if you were doing this back in like kindergarten or first grade. So it's gonna be so fun to watch. Can you tell that I, this is something I'm really, really excited? I'm so jealous of what you guys do. So thank you so much for sharing this with, with.
Thank you.
I sound like a, I was gonna say a twelve-year-old, but that's, that's probably not the right thing to say. No, I'm, this is really, thanks, thank you, really, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Really exciting, so thanks.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Dr. Burdo, did you have anything to add with that?
I'm thinking about what Dan had said and going back years and where we were and the, just the involvement nature of by grade level. And then your role moving to the digital learning coaches piece really is, they're not there to figure out and troubleshoot, you know, a computer's not working for some reason. That's not their role. It really is, you're talking about the integration and engagement, and it is the coolest job.
Yeah, and they bring, they bring the ideas and they bring the passion. And I will just say in sixty seconds or less, freckle used to be called front row and the idea that every student had a front row seat in the classroom because it was adaptive. They changed it to freckle, because even identical twins, if they have a freckle, it differentiates them. So it's about every student getting an individualized experience.
That's nice. Thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
You can bring that.
Wow, wow.
That's deep, that's a deep cut by Dr. Mello.
Wow, so someone that grew up, as someone that grew up with a lot of freckles who have now faded into age spots, my mother used to tell me that freckles were angel kisses. So that's, I thought that may be where it came from, but I don't know. So thank you, guys, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Burdo, did you want to?
I would like to invite Ms. Lorraine White up to the guest table. She's here to talk about the proposed program of studies for next school year. You also have Ms. Myers-Pakla on the agenda. She is not going to be here with Ms. White this evening, because she's actually with our jazz ensemble in Boston at Governor Baker's State of the Commonwealth Address, where our musicians are playing. And that is really exciting. They're actually playing before and after the event. So she's flying solo this evening, but have full confidence in Ms. White and what she's going to share with you.
Thank you.
It's not her first.
No, it's not my first rodeo.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Good to see everybody again. So I'm here just to talk about the program of studies. I think everybody has a copy of it. Might not be as exciting as the last presentation. But so we, we put a program of studies together every year, every year, and we try to address the students' needs. And we add or subtract classes depending on what students' interests are. And we try to accommodate those, accommodate those if possible. We are also lucky that if, being a small school, we can't run every class. So we also have the virtual high school option, which really covers a lot. So pretty much students can take almost any class that they want. So if you thumb through the, the, the package, it's pretty self-explanatory. It has all the classes that we're having in the, the different levels that we have. And this year, last year, we presented several new classes. So we're giving them a couple of years to really work its way through, because kids, some kids didn't know about them, so it takes a couple of years. So this year, we're keeping it the same. We didn't add any new classes. We're just going to work with the same classes we had last year and see how things pan out. We've already started the process of choosing classes. Last week, we were at the Ahern School, and we were choosing classes for the upcoming ninth graders. And we're starting with the high school's kids in about a week or so. We'll be going into their classes to present the, the different options that they might have. So I think everybody knows we have, you know, college prep classes. We have honors classes, advanced classes, and we try to meet the needs of all the students. And the teachers do a really good job with that. So I'm not sure what else, what else to say. We have, you know, same, same requirements as we did last year as well. So should, does people want me to go into detail?
Thank you.
I'm just sorry. So, yeah, as you said, it's pretty self-explanatory.
All right, so thank you. Any questions? I know, like you said, there haven't been any changes from last year to this year. Sarah, I know that you weren't a part of this, this conversation last year, so I didn't know if you had any questions, since this is, I know you, you know, you've gone through this with students, but as a school committee member, any questions or comments on, on the program of studies?
Uh-oh. I did the course booklet pretty thoroughly when I got the packet last week. Everything looks great. And as a high school parent, I have nothing but good things to say about the process. So thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Yeah, just, I think people know, though, but we do have a different packet for upcoming ninth graders. It's a little smaller, less overwhelming, because there's certain classes that are just not, you know, they're not at the right developmental level to take. So we narrowed it down so that they have a different packet. And we did give that to all the ninth-grade students last week. We will also be having our seventh and eighth grade open house this Thursday evening. And we're going to do a program of studies for the upcoming ninth graders, so our current eighth-grade parents, to answer questions that they might have about the classes, because some of them, it's their first time through it. So we'll be doing that this week as well.
Brent, just, mostly just my own education here. When it comes to the virtual high school, is that specific, is that exclusively for courses that Foxborough High School doesn't offer? Or is it also an option if, oh, gosh, this just doesn't fit into my schedule?
Okay, so we, we, our preference is for the student to take the class in the building, if it's offered. If for a reason, for some scheduling reason, we can't fit it in, then we will offer it that way. But if there's any way, we prefer to have our teachers teach it. And right now, we're lucky enough, we have, you know, twenty-five slots that we use for that. And so far, that has worked out perfectly for our students.
So is there anything in the works that kind of like, okay, we're not changing for this coming school year, but are kind of in the thought process about maybe we might be adding something two years down the line or looking at researching? Is that, is there anything, any areas that they're looking to expand into or see that there's more interest coming up?
Yeah, so we have the students choose their courses. And sometimes when we have to limit the amount of students who get it and who want it, then we realize there's a need. And so then we try to, the following year, follow up on that need. Again, it's all with staffing, though. Okay, so if we add this course, what course might not have, you know, had a huge enrollment? And we look at that. So we look at that every year. So yes, but if you're thinking, if you're saying like, is there a certain area that student, you know, they're going for? I think it's pretty much all over the place, to be honest with you. Our business courses get filled right away. So we're always looking at seeing how we can get more students into those classes. But no, we just evaluate it every year.
I was actually having a conversation with Dr. Maternik. She's our science department head. And we were talking about, before COVID hit, we had taken a team from the high school to visit Sandwich High School for practically the way for biomedical engineering as a continuation for our middle school students who are in the medical detectives. That is our probably, Green Architecture is the closest, they're all popular, but that one is, seems to be very, very popular. And so we just were talking about it yesterday after a meeting. And she said, the tricky part is something else has to go. When something new comes in, something else has to go, because there's not a lot of room in the schedule. And there's only so much staff to go around. So it's figuring out the timing of that and when the interest is there. So as those middle schools are in eighth grade right now, it probably won't be next year. It might not even be the year after. But that's, we're looking at, like, what do those opportunities look like based on student interest, like you said, and availability?
Yeah.
Because that's just one example, I'm sure there are others.
Yeah, and that's where I'm just wondering, because just seeing if there's trends of how student interests and what they're looking at, you know, whether they're changing. And especially through COVID, has that increased interest in some areas? Or kind of, any divergence from there? I'm just curious.
And it is, it's absolutely true, is, and we're always looking for like more hands-on classes, because students, some students really thrive in those environments. So we try to offer a variety of those as well. And it is hard, because something does have to go for something else to come in. But again, it's really on a year-to-year basis, because we look for enrollment. And that's how we've created so many of our classes over the years, is either a huge amount, take a virtual high school class, and we're like, oh, everybody wants AP Psych. Why don't we offer it like in the regular, you know? So we start to look at those things every year. But I don't know if there's a particular trend.
I'm just wondering, is there at any point where questions are being asked to the students, whether in, you know, upper middle school as well as high schools? Are there classes that aren't being offered that people would be interested in? Just to see, to start trying to kind of plan, because I could see how some interest may be changing that we're just not even aware of.
Yeah.
I think through going through NEAS, too, and through our self-study, we're going to have those kinds of things surface as well through that process.
Does NAVIAS capture any of that in that process?
Ah.
Honestly, I don't know, that's why I ask.
Not really. Yeah, there's, yeah, no, not really. It doesn't have that. But to answer that, so we call every student down individually, and we talk to them as consultants, and we try to get a feel. Now, to be honest with you, the ninth and tenth graders have so many requirements. There's, there's, they're usually at that point, no, no, everything's fine. You know, because they haven't even like really had a chance to explore. But when you get to the eleventh and twelfth graders and you start talking to them about electives, and they're like, no, no, no. And then you're just like, so, so what would you be interested in? So we do have that, but it's usually the eleventh and twelfth graders that we get a better feel of what they might want. Yeah.
And then the courses that were added this past year, I remember with the presentation last year, has there been one that's been more popular?
So, yeah, and I'm just gonna make sure I have the right name to it. But this, yeah, there's a couple that have, we actually had to turn kids away already. Sorry. One, here we go. The sports in society and sports media are overflowing. So those two really, you know, took off right away.
Right.
You know, and the rest of them, it's like some classes didn't, and we thought would. And then we're thinking, okay, this is a fabulous class. Why aren't kids taking it? And so you start to look at it, is that the wording is, are we not presenting it the right way? Because maybe, you know, so we, that's why we're keeping them again, to see if we could maybe do a better job.
Right. Plus, you know, I imagine many kids are already starting to plan out even, you know, now for what they're thinking about. If you're a sophomore, you're probably thinking about what the next two years look like for you. So something new got introduced, you got to figure out a way to fit that in to your schedule as well. So now that it's been out there for a little while, I can imagine they can start figuring out how to accommodate those in their schedule.
Yeah, we do encourage them to use the thing on page ninety-three, which can maps out like their whole four years.
Right.
Because like some, like you said, sometimes, oh, I can't take it this year, but maybe next year or the following year, and try to map out what they think might work in their schedule.
Right.
I just want to add the sports media one, the one that was so popular. It was Mr. Neely, right? That, he was, they were featured in the Partners in Patriotism magazine, where they actually took the students on a field trip, and they got to be in the press booth. And so I think that experiential learning and that, in our Pillars for Success, the relevance piece, that's so relevant, because it's so real, and they're making that real connection. So I think what we're seeing more of is kids craving sort of that relevance piece, that real-world piece. Those are the types of courses that they really do. Although Hamilton was also very popular, they were very excited about that one, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really depends on the group, but.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Brent, sorry?
No, a couple of things. And, because it varies from school to school. Are there areas in which you see, because the variety in here is amazing. And I've always said that, and thankful to have landed in this town because of it. But are there areas where you're overtly kind of in competition with yourself? And there's classes that are actually, you just don't have the humans to run?
Oh, hundred percent, yes.
Okay.
We, because when students need to make decisions, and again, being in a small school.
Yes.
We're not allowed, we're not allowed, we're not able to run every class every period. So, yes, so sometimes hard decisions have to be made. A student might want, really want two classes, but they're only offered period four. So then they're, you know, so teachers, you know, they are in competition with themselves. So they might really want the class, it just doesn't fit into their schedule.
So a follow-up on that, is there any other instances where you find you're able to satisfy that by running courses on-years, off-years? Like, we'll run it this year, but, you know, so juniors and seniors who are interested can take it, and then we won't run it, and then we'll run it the year after. Is that a thing?
We haven't done that. I'm gonna process that for me, because we haven't done that. We've run everything every year, and then what we do is encourage the students, like, let's say it's an eleventh grader, okay, you had to make a choice and couldn't take this one this year. Next year, we'll try to put it in a period that, we make a conscious effort to put it in a period that it will fit into their schedule. But we run it every year, but we have not thought about the on and off.
Again, that's what I was wondering, are you like actually running all of these every year?
Pretty much.
Really?
Yes. There's a, there's a handful, if the enrollment isn't where.
Yeah, it's low.
Yeah, yeah, no, we run, yeah, we, we, we're, our students are very lucky, I think, you know, we've run pretty much all the courses, we're able to.
Okay.
Fill them, yeah. There's very few, I want to say maybe four or five every year that might not fill to capacity.
That's low.
Yeah, that's not, yes, I'm saying, it's not that many. No, I'm, I'm with you, a hundred percent. We are, we're very lucky, we're able to run most of the classes.
And then follow-up, not that you need more variety in here, but at some point, I'd love to see computer science make.
We've been, we talk about it for years, and I think everybody, yes.
Because it fits under Desi as a science.
We agree, okay? And we've tried to run it in the past. And students don't sign up for it.
Okay.
And we're always amazed, like, it's like four or five, and that's not enough to run a class. But we always think that, why aren't students taking computer science? And we do have tried to run it in the past. Right now, I'm actually not sure. Right now, I'm actually not sure with, if, you know, if we have the personnel to run it, but even if we did, it doesn't see, students, I don't know.
But don't you wonder after tonight's presentation, when those kind of first graders, second graders come up, there might be more of a.
Interest like that.
Because you build it from the bottom up, in elementary through middle, and hopefully there's interest in that.
Because we always have a handful of students who want it, and that's why they end up taking it, Virtual High School.
Yeah, exactly.
They're taking VHS. But it's, it really is a handful.
And we launched, practically the way, Computer Science for Innovators and Makers at the middle school, so that's the first course that's had the name Computer Science in it. I think a lot of kids don't know what Computer Science is.
They don't.
And that's part of the issue. So hopefully, we will see that shift, and to Michelle's point, kids will come up looking for that and be interested in it, and then we'll be able to offer it. We know it's important.
Yeah.
Nice. Well, thank you so much for.
You're welcome.
And I just, before, if I may, just to thank Laureen for everything that she's done over the years, she's actually retiring at the end of the school year.
Yes.
So we congratulate her.
Thank you.
She will be missed, and all that you've done, so just a publicly thank you.
I appreciate that.
For all of the students who've made a difference for.
Absolutely.
And it's not your first rodeo by any means, you've had lots of rodeos here.
Pretty sad.
How many years?
Thirty-four, yeah.
Wow, thank you so much.
No, thank you, I really.
Congratulations.
Really enjoyed my time here at Foxborough, it's been great.
Have all 34 been in Foxborough?
No, 24 in Foxborough.
Okay, still, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
You got me beat.
Yeah.
All right, by a couple of years, but that's awesome.
But yeah, no, it's, it's been a great experience, it's just the most supportive place you'd ever want to work, it's been great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I'll be seeing you one more time, though, I think in, like, I don't know, June, the end-of-year report?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks very much, thanks for coming this evening.
Thanks.
Next, superintendent's update, Dr. Berdus.
All right. So the conversation that we had at our last school committee meeting, as far as when we looked at the impact of COVID and our absenteeism, I had mentioned we're starting to go in the right direction, trending in the right direction, and we absolutely are.
Good.
That has been really great to see a difference in student attendance. So when we came back from the break, that second, or that first week of January, on average, our student attendance, we were looking at like 14%. And then we dropped that, and we, the next week, and we've continued, so we're at like 6% average.
Great.
Which is more typical in any particular time period, and we've seen that, the same with staff. So that has been, you know, really great to see, that our students are back, and that spike, that, you know, we all heard that that's what was going to happen, and it did. And because of that, we're also able to start looking at things a little bit differently. So our case count, one of, I was in a superintendent's meeting earlier today, and we were talking about the numbers. So right now, as of last, we update on Wednesdays, we were at 55 total cases. If we had said that a year ago, we would have been like, oh my gosh, 55 cases. But based on where we are in the circumstances now, it's just, it's interesting to see how it's evolved, and, and how everyone's handling that piece, and it's, it's a very different place, obviously, with the variant and all. But I think that our parents are listening, and if their students are not feeling well, and following those guidelines, we know that's the most important mitigation strategy, so that's, that's great. The vaccinations, those have increased. So just to kind of go through the numbers there, from where we were, so when we look at that staff-student percentage for vaccination rates at the high school, we're at 78% right now. At the middle school, we're at 66%. At the Burl, 43%. At the IGO, 57%.
Wow.
And at the Taylor, 55%. So we're seeing those numbers increase. As a reminder, on the 31st of January, those that came on to our COVID clinic on January 10th, their second shot is on the 31st. I sent out a reminder about that today, because we just learned today, and some parents had asked about the booster, because before, it was only the 16 and older. We are going to be able to have 12-plus. And that's adult boosters as well, but they're limited, so sign up right away, if you're interested in that. But that was good news today, that they were going to be able to accommodate the booster for 12 and older. And that's the 31st at the IGO, from 6:30 to 8:30. I also sent out an update yesterday, just a couple of other updates, spectators at sporting events, with this trend going down, we'll look to take away that limitation next week for events. And then the other piece is the testing program. So we know that the Department of Ed and Governor Baker came out and had said, here's another option for schools. And that option is to, if you're like us, and we're engaging in the test and stay, would be to eliminate test and stay, eliminate contact tracing, and instead, then provide at-home tests for families every two weeks, but it's voluntary opt-in. Lots of discussions, met with our local health officials, talked about this, looked at the implications, and for Foxborough, we want to stay the course. It has been working for us, we have been successful with our test and stay program, CIC coming in, that's worked really well, and we have more control there than just who happens to opt in. At the same time, the, taking those kits and getting them out every two weeks, and figuring out who wants them, and getting the, you know, one of the examples was given when, at the, the last day of school, when we're, the nurses are giving back EpiPens to students, and they're having to chase them down and find them. To think about having to chase down students every two weeks of, oh, are you signed up? Did you voluntarily sign in? Did your family, and then, at the same time, give up our test and stay? It, it didn't make sense for us. We can always change our mind if we want to, before April, and opt into that, but you also, the important thing to note is, you also have to then engage in pooled testing or symptomatic testing, if you're going to do that. So we have chosen to stay the course, to continue with our test and stay program, to continue with our contact tracing, particularly, lunch is where we've seen if there's been any, you know, questionable transmission, because masks are off at that time. So we will continue with that. The other change is the letters going home, we were sending emails, I get every single one of them, every single day. Parents, I think, have become desensitized to those emails going home, it, it's very time-consuming, believe it or not, on the administration side, to do that. We will always reach out and contact our families for close contacts, and that will continue. So we're not changing the course at this point in time, with the testing program. So I'll kind of pause there, in case there's any questions.
So.
Sarah, Miss Ben.
I was gonna say, what's, so if we opt, if we decide not to do the test and stay, and we move to the other program, so with the pooled testing, and what was the other, the symptomatic testing?
Symptomatic testing.
How exactly does that work?
So we did not start that at the beginning of the year, and the reason was, because if you, we want our families to keep our students home if they're not feeling well. Otherwise, if they're not feeling well, and they have runny noses, and then they send them to school, and then, oh, you have symptoms, so we're going to test you. We would rather them not come to school if they're not feeling well, and they have those symptoms, and then families can test at home, and then communicate that to the nurses. So we're not doing symptomatic testing for that reason.
Okay.
And pool testing, we're not doing either.
No. And I, and I can tell you, just from speaking with other colleagues in other districts where they have done pooled testing, a lot of the conversations I've had, people have abandoned or want to abandon. It has not, it has not, you're not yielding from that what you had hoped, and I think that's one of the reasons, too, that you see some that have abandoned it.
Does it just cause more testing to have to wind up being done?
Yes.
Is that what the concern is?
And again, it's two, it's voluntary, you still have to opt in to that, and that's the same as if you were to be passing out test kits to send home with students, it's still voluntary.
Pool testing is a good idea if everybody does it, if you're in the pool. If you're not, then you just opened up a gate, big hole in your fence, and that's, that's, that's been the issue, at least in districts that I'm aware of. And the other thing that's, yeah, that plus the current variants, hot, comparatively higher non-symptomatic carrier rate, I think, is the other thing, but that's my understanding.
We just, our, you know, our, our nurses have, I think, done an outstanding job with, we got on early, and so it's been really smooth with test and stay. We've had days where all five buildings, we're, we're having, you know, 60 students at a time with test and stay. And that's not even yielding the positive results, it's, it's really, the, the number is really small. So that's good news, we're able to keep kids in school, which is our goal.
One of the questions I have regarding test and stay, is, is there any, my understanding is, test and stay is only if they're exposed at school.
Correct.
But if they're exposed at home, or exposed somewhere else, because the goal is to keep kids in school as much as possible, is there any way for that to be modified, so that if a child was exposed outside of school, they could still be in school on test and stay, just like somebody else who was exposed?
We can't do the test and stay with them, and that's part of the protocols, so anytime there's questions on something like that, our nurses have talked with parents to kind of go through what that process looks like. But we're not able to do the test and stay if it's not an exposure during school.
And that's based on the funding and the, and the program that was put together by the state.
The way that it's ran.
And the notion that we're potentially inviting kids to come to school who, the families know who have been exposed. Interesting.
But they're already, they're, I don't see the difference between a child who might have been exposed to school, and a child exposed from somewhere else, because a lot of times.
Responsible thing would be for a parent to leave the kid at home and test on their own, but that's, that becomes.
But we can't control all of the other variables outside of school.
But yeah, no, I understand your, I, I understand the distinction you're making, Michelle.
Exposure is exposure.
You're right. And that's, and like, in either scenario, right, I think that's the gap. What do you, I mean, I don't know, what do you, what's your thought process on that? Because I understand the, where your question's coming from.
Right, it's, it's more about, if the goal is to keep kids in school, and I understand we can't control that, and that's what, just what I'm trying to figure out, is something's changed, we have another option now, but they still haven't filled that one gap with the test and stay. Because it's like, if the goal is to keep kids in school.
Right.
Exposure is exposure, it doesn't matter where the exposure is, because it could be exposure from the same kids, because you have a sibling who might have been exposed, but one kid is able to be in school because they got exposed at school, but the other kid, because exposure was outside of school.
But we don't know exactly what that exposure looked like.
Mm-hmm.
And so when we have the other mitigation factors, in school, we know that it was in a classroom, they were less than three feet. And then two, we have so many that are exempt now, because our vaccination rates are going up, which is good news, too.
I just think it's curious.
It is curious that the options presented, and it's, either, either road presented leaves a known hole.
Right. A known hole of kids that are not able to be in school, when the goal is to keep them in school, so. But it doesn't look like that's being filled anytime soon.
No, yeah.
And it's a funding issue, of course. Okay.
So the other piece that I just wanted to mention is that our next school committee meeting, so in the, this time of year, in the past, we've talked about overnight travel.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be bringing to you three different events that are coming up. We met at length with our safety committee and talking about what those are, like, as an example.
Sure.
It is the DECA group going into Boston. Boston's requiring all students to be vaccinated, to be able to participate, they have all of the, you know, protocols in place. And our students will be with our own students, and so we're taking other mitigation strategies into effect, like, for instance, you know, you know, we might have, in the past, we would have had four students sharing a room, it's going to be two.
Yeah.
You know, those kinds of things. So like, the DECA going into Boston, the, essentially Ellington, if that were to happen, you know, that, that's New York in that case, and then the other one would be the cheerleaders for their competition in Florida. And in that case, it's, they're, they're pushed off, this is not until March, but the planning part of it, they have to plan now. So I know that those are three that will be brought to you at the next school committee meeting, for.
Well then, as a preview to that, I guess, so then, looking down the road, I guess, the obvious questions, I'm sure that the organizers are thinking about are, you know, what are the outs for cancellations, and things of that nature, and all that stuff?
And having the insurance for those, too.
Exactly.
Yes, those are definitely conversations that we're having.
Okay, thanks.
But, you know, we're, we're really hopeful to be able to get back to these things for kids that are so important, and we know that we're following all of the different, you know, strategies that are there, and they're going to have to follow those there as well, because those are still going to be in place.
Yes. Thank you for the heads up, too.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. We do need to go back to one item, the, the program of studies, we are supposed, according to our minutes here, we're supposed to vote on approval of those, of that program studies, and I skipped over that task for us. So were there any, can we have a motion, or are there any questions or comments on the program of studies for the high school? Okay, so without that, maybe we have a motion.
I move to accept the Foxborough High School Program of Studies for 2022 through 23 as presented.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. So Brent, motion, Michelle seconded, all in favor of approval? Thank you, 400, thank you very much, and I apologize for forgetting that earlier.
Nice catch.
Or skipping over that. Next, we started the discussion last week about the school calendar, we want to pick that up and review it, and then vote on that this evening, and that was a verbal reminder to myself to vote at the end, so. There you go.
So really, it's, it's a question for the committee here, we had the two options to go forward for you to consider. The second option, which is your yellow copy, would be the one that we're recommending for the 22, 23 school year, which the difference is to take the January Professional Development Day and move that to March, and then we would reassess at the end of next year, how that goes from the calendar standpoint.
I have no questions.
What's the reasoning for moving it to March?
So it, January is very disrupted with the number of holidays that are there, coming back after the new year, having the Martin Luther King holiday, we've, like, this year, to not disrupt two full weeks, we had Martin Luther King holiday on Monday, and Professional Development Day on Friday, so that way, it just impacted that one week. We've talked about it for a number of years, the pros and cons, if we were to move it to March, is that too late to really have an impact on what the professional development looks like on that day? If it were this year, we would say, we wished we had it in March, because of the data that we're looking at from our new screening tools, and to be able to then still act on that data. At the same time, in the past, it has worked well, particularly the high school, because of going between term two and term three, it's kind of a natural break, if you have a change of courses, it kind of provides that, that break at that time. And it, it, it works out well, just logistically that way. But the, from a teaching and learning standpoint, March is not too far out during the school year to where you can't then take whatever you've learned on that, you still have a good amount of the school year left, but it spaces it out from the October and all that comes up, and it leads right to that. So we feel like it, it's something we've talked about for years, and we'd like to try it and see how it works.
Okay, and so now, just, I'm just looking at the schedule on, because it tends to, that Professional Development Day tends to fall around the end of the midterms.
Correct.
And so now, it's, I, I can see the term two sort of ends on a Friday instead of a Thursday. So does that change how midterms typically are, are gonna look?
No, it's, it's the, the break in the calendars, just between, if you think about even first semester courses, if they're half-year courses. And from a teacher's standpoint, you're still going to have midterms at that time of year. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Allison, as far as the discussion for March versus January?
I think, as Dr. Berdo said, this year, with a new fast bridge screener and the new Panorama screener, there's, there's even been times when we've wanted a little more training for the teachers, that we thought, oh, wish we could, so we've been stealing time from like our PLCs and things like that. This has really come up many times before, and it's, it's just, I think that's why we want to try it, just to see how it works. In terms of your question about midterms, I understand what you're asking, would they go to classes that day? Because like, normally their, their, their midterms will be done, where will they go, is that where you're sort of getting?
It's kind of like how it fell this year, is like, they have midterms sort of started before Martin Luther King Day, and then they had midterms during that following week.
Right.
And then they kind of, they have that day break.
Right.
So I'm looking at it from a student's perspective of kind of how it maps out, I'm just wondering how that, that will look.
Yeah, I actually don't know the answer to that question, however, thinking about it just in terms of the number of days that they have midterms, I suppose it could move that Friday day that they have testing, they wouldn't have to test on that Friday before that weekend, maybe.
Yeah, it could move it upper back.
It depends on, it depends on what you.
Boom.
Correct, yeah.
What your thoughts and what your, what your schedule is.
Well, one thing I've heard this year from parents is that the high school does a really tremendous job of preparing kids for the midterms, so I'm sure whatever it is, it won't be a surprise, they'll know exactly what's coming, and they'll be ready for it.
The other thing that has kept us in the past from not having it in March, where we're saying, we've talked about this for years, is because of MCAS testing that takes place at that time, and we felt as though, oh, we're giving up a day, whether it's the retest if students missed it. But, I mean, even the testing schedule for MCAS has changed.
Correct.
And it's not, it's been different as far as the length of testing, so we feel like it's a time that, okay, we've talked about this for a really long time, let's, let's see how this works and then reassess it.
Is there any questions, thoughts? No, okay.
No.
Okay, Brent?
No, I think it's a worthwhile experiment.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that, that we want to vote on the approval of option number two, which is moving the professional development, that's our lead, right, we want to vote on Professional Development Day moving to March from January, and then accepting that school calendar. Right? So in light of that, is there a motion?
I move to accept administration's proposal, option two, as presented.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think Sarah had a question, sorry, thank you.
Sorry, I just don't see the date, I, I don't have the, for whatever reason, I only have the proposed from last week. Does anyone have the date in March, I was just curious if it was.
St. Patty's Day, the 17th.
Okay, thank you.
March 17th. Why is that a date of note? I'm kidding.
No, it's just, that's, that's what it is.
That's where the calendar fell, so, thank you for that, thank you for that. So Brent has a motion, Michelle seconded, did I hear that?
Second.
Okay, I wasn't sure, or Sarah seconded, thank you. And there was a reminder, because Sarah's virtual, we do need to move to roll call vote, so I apologize for not doing that earlier. So Sarah, in favor? Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm also in favor, so 400 for the option two, March Professional Development Day School Calendar. Thank you. Another fun one, the budget. This is awesome. Dr. Berdo, Mr. Yugna, who's going first?
I think at this, this point, we really are at questions, we, we met with a budget subcommittee, we have really not any changes from before.
Minor, I mean, they, as you saw in your package, the definition of what has changed between the first version and this third version, basically is correcting some money between different lines, but the budget amount's staying the same, so nothing significant that way.
Okay. Thank you, now Sarah, I know that you, that you and Michelle were here for the last conversation, and looking at this information, did you have any questions on any of the budget items, or any of the, the updates, are the corrections to the budget?
No.
I didn't, I saw highlight, the highlighted corrections, thank you very much for spelling that out. And it is overwhelming, but it, it seemed pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Yeah, and we met with Brent and Richard, who's your subcommittee, to go even more in detail.
Right, so we did.
Right, and so coming out of that, Brent, was there anything that, that stood out for you that you, you wanted to make the rest of the committee aware of?
Yeah, I mean, and I'd ask Bill, Dr. Mello, and Dr. Berdo to fill in when I say something inevitably incorrect. But yeah, the, I guess kind of my take on it is, I'll start small and then say something, the larger thing is that the net staffing was naturally, for many reasons, going to go down, and the reason our net staffing isn't going down all that much is because of a lot of grant-funded positions, particularly around the areas of social emotional health that we've been talking about all year, which is, ties in with what our Teaching and Learning Highlight was presenting today, with focus on, on student support and, and student voice and choice, and, and in some of those higher support areas. And this is also bearing in mind that we're actually, at the direction of administration, Mr. Michael Azic has worked with his faculty and families to develop programs that bring students back to the district, because it's least restrictive environment, and so with, even with all those changes, we're still going down by slightly more than one FTE. And within all that, taking the big view, the town has asked all departments to keep, keep their budgets within a two and a half percent increase, and this budget does that. And this is still in a year where the, where the town has taken in a lot, lot less revenue with meals tax and Patriot Place events being down, or rather, Gillette events being down and things of that nature. And Mr. Yugna was very good to point out to the subcommittee, as he did to AgCom the other night, that the vast majority of the district's expenditure, and therefore the, a majority of the town's expenditure is on, is, is on our, our teachers, and, and on our, on our staff, and the, and the humans that make this endeavor possible. And so then, when you're looking to cut beyond that, you're looking at expenses. And the, the two real, and so they've held all the expenses level funded, save two areas, both of which had to go up, which are the technology licensure and subscriptions that we've come to rely on, and frankly, this committee has asked and endorsed us, the, the, the school to jump hole hog into that and really use that one-to-one technology to the fullest, and use that adaptive technologies we're hurting, adaptive learning we were hearing about tonight. So that naturally had to go up, and the other thing was destined to go up is utilities, because we need a lot more fresh air in the buildings, and they frankly just cost more anyway. So those are my, my big takeaways, are there other things that, that you've all heard from before that are useful, or things that we should touch upon before voting from administration?
I think the, one of the important factors, too, and it's, it's not, I don't think lost on anybody, and that is that we are still in negotiations with contracts, the big six.
Yeah.
We still have to try to get those to fit within this two and a half percent. So there's still a lot of work to do behind the scenes to even make this a successful budget. But, you know, the reality is, you know, as Brett just said, the, the town has put that out at two and a half percent, and they've already put together their budget package, which shows that with everybody trying to stay in that level on the operational budgets, areas that are operational, like debt, insurances, things of that nature, are going up by more than two and a half percent, and with the combination of the two, they're just making it to a balanced budget. So from a concerned point of view of where we could just say, well, we just need more money, and it's gonna, it's the, there's a seesaw where it's going to come from somebody else if, if, if we get it, just like it's going to come from us if somebody else gets it.
Right.
So I, I think, you know, the town has worked well with us in the past, and we've worked well with the other departments, so for all of us to, you know, kind of heed the two and a half percent, the town lost $4.5 million in revenue over the last two years because of, of, you know, some of the losses Brent just outlined at, at the stadium, and meals tax and other things. We have a low free cash compared to where we've been in the past, it used to be close to $9 million, we're down to about $3.7 million, I believe it is now. But even that, this year, was certified based on a lot of things that will never happen again. We got our $1.005 back in health insurance money because people weren't going to the doctors, that's not going to happen this year. We, town budgets including ourselves, we put back $470,000, but the rest of the town put back $930,000, so 1.4 million of that free cash came from budgets not being spent, and then they didn't pay the OPEB.
That's the other big one.
So, you know, the $3.7, $3.8 million is really all pretty much on one-time items that aren't going to happen again. We will give back, you know, the schools and everybody else will give back a certain amount of money this year, but, you know, it's typically more around $5,000 to $700,000. So the, the free cash position's a very scary scenario, because we use almost $700,000 of free cash just to balance the budget, the operating budgets, and then we use the other parts of the free cash to do our CIP. So without those numbers being where they, where we really need them to be, it's going to limit us in other areas as well. So we're not, we're not in the boom days right now, and we just need to kind of get through this process.
Well, and through all that, I was also impressed that you mentioned that, that this budget that we're talking about in conjunction with all the departments in town, does restore that OPEB money back and brings us back into that, that, that practice that the whole town and all the departments had thankfully agreed to a few years ago now to, to rest, make, make that, make that obligation whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Comments, concerns? So without that, without those, will we have a motion to approve the $38 million budget?
Can I make the motion, or should I not?
I think we'd actually prefer to have somebody that's not on the budget subcommittee make that motion, please. Sarah's making the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget for FY 22, '23.
Thank you.
Can you put the amount?
Yep, so Sarah would. Thank you, and I read the wrong number, so thank you for, for that. So, motion is to approve the budget as proposed for $39,581,414.
As proposed.
Second.
Thank you very much. Michelle, approval?
Sarah.
Sarah, sorry, geez, this is a long day. Thank you very much. Michelle. Anybody else, Brent?
Aye.
Thank you, and then I also approve it, so the budget's approved. Thank you.
Sweet like butter.
Yeah, next, the CIP budget, the CIP plan, excuse me.
Yep.
So obviously, similar to past years, we, so we actually present the five-year plan so that the town can kind of, you know, work its way outwards as to what the needs are. This, basically, we're, we're going back to asking what we used to ask for, which was the $200,000 on the computer software, you know, our hardware, and, and any kind of upgrades and replacements. We've been doing that for probably about 15 years, and that's what helped us stay into cycles. It's going to be a little trickier in a couple of years when the laptops all kind of come over the same age, but we're already working on strategies as to how we're going to have to handle that. The buses, as you can see, we have three different buses, the top priority bus is the 35-passenger with a wheelchair accessibility. Our backup in that area right now, basically, is, is not going to be able to be reregistered after this year, more than likely. So that one is critical for us. The second one would be the other 35-passenger minibus, again, high mileage on, on that one. And then third, in the order of kind of what we need, would be a, a full 77-passenger bus. As you can see, ironically, there's not a lot of difference in price between the standard mini and the full-size bus. The, but the difference is on the mini, even though it looks almost identical and just being a little shorter, it does have air conditioning, which is because we use it during the summer months for our summer programs and stuff like that, so there's, there's a natural tick on the price on that. That makes up the difference for the length of the bus, basically, and the end cost. We are doing nothing but gas motors at this point, which we switched over a couple of years ago, and the DPW maintenance team basically feels that they're not only getting the same mileage that we would be getting out of the diesels, but the cost of maintaining them is lower, and it's easier to actually get technicians that can work on the gas engines versus the diesel engines that are out there. Copiers, you know, typically, as, as you know, we have a fleet of copiers throughout the, of the buildings, and we replace four a year, depending on high use of any building. So if we find one that's got higher use than another, we buy some that are a little smaller, and we buy some that are a little bigger, so we'll, we'll switch off depending on where we need a high-speed one that can handle a heavier load. Ironically, we, even with, not the first year of COVID, but last year, we were pretty close to our same copier count, and this year, we've kind of returned back to more of our standards, even with the one-to-one initiative, it's, it's a little interesting that way. So we may have some work to do there and try to, to reduce those numbers and hopefully get backed out of copiers, but the other side of that is, we are now looking at copiers as being more of a primary thing, so that even when teachers are printing from their classrooms over time here, we're going to need to look at the, have centralized printing locations versus printers in every room, because it's just not, you know, it's not sustainable from a cost point of view. And then the final thing, which we've talked about before, is the music equipment. We're actually in the second year, as you know, this was a three-year, $175,000 ask. First year, we actually were able to do, because of funding we had left within our own budget, and we did get the approval of the CIP committee to do that. This is the second year of that plan at $56,000, and next year would be at $50,000. And we will have pretty much maintained or replaced the larger pieces of equipment throughout the band, which were 20-plus years old, and, and many of them in, in bad repair as far as just age, not, not because they weren't taken care of. The Taylor School renovation, the, the MSBA just, well, actually, in two to three days, on the 28th, will open up the statement of interest period, and we'll get a chance to see the documents at that point in time as far as what they're requesting. Few different things, obviously, we're not going to ask for any money in this period of time, because the statement of interest we can do and submit, and it will literally be almost a year from now by the time they come back and really, you know, tell you whether or not you're in it, and before you really have to go to any next steps. The only real new difference is that I saw just in the write-ups was that there are new vote requirements. If you remember, if anybody was on it, no, I guess none of you were on it last time, so you would. So there's, there's specific language for not only the school committee to have a vote and, and sign off on it, but for the board of selectmen to have a vote and sign off on it, and that they've, they've kind of gotten a little more prescriptive in, in some of that stuff, but, so we would bring that, we'll bring that back to you as we move forward here, but I think we go from January 28th to like, I don't remember if it was the end of February, no, yeah, either the end of February or the middle of March, by the time we have the statement of interest done, so we've got some time. Oh, it's actually longer than that.
Yeah, it's longer, because it just came out, so.
It was like April that we have, so we'll obviously move the process through as quickly as we can. What I did learn the last time around is you want to get these votes done and get them into them sooner than later, because then if they have a question or an issue, you still have time to, to get in front of another meeting if something went wrong, so. So that's basically it, and, and it's a, it's kind of a big ask, knowing the, the financial conditions, the only thing that we have to really hope gets us through, and that is the, the ARPA money, that's the federal money that's coming in, which is basically for lost revenue. And as you can see, just with our ask, if you put on the DPW's ask, and police and fire, and on top of all that, the ARPA money would be lucky to, to fund the CIP for the next three years. So it's, it's not like it's a windfall that's going to fix everything else, it's basically going to keep us whole for a while.
It's a patch.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Joe, I know you had a question or a comment, we'll come back, we'll come back to that in a minute, okay? Let's finish this conversation, and then we'll come back to it, okay? Brent?
If, and if I could impose upon you to repeat something we said a couple of meetings ago when you first presented this, how many of the buses represented here are very close to not being able to be recertified or re, re, reregistered? I thought it was, wasn't it two of the three, or one of the three?
Two, the, the, the two minis really are, are at that point now.
Yes, okay.
The, the 77-passenger, the issue with it is, quite honestly, it is, it's a 2011, and it does have high mileage on it. So we typically have always tried to stay at the 10 years, 100,000 miles, this is just, just under 100,000 miles, but, you know, right now it's at 11 years, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about the CIP plan? So seeing none of those, may we have a motion to approve that plan as well?
Motion to approve the CIP plan as presented.
Thank you. Second? Brent, Sarah, Sarah's going to second, thank you very much. Michelle?
Approve.
Thank you, Brent?
Aye.
Sarah?
Approve.
Thank you very much, so, four in favor, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now, Joe, you did have a question or a comment.
Comment. I want, I just looked, I just wanted to make aware that I looked it up, I looked it up on the MSBA website. The deadline for submitting applications is April 29th.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And it opens this Friday.
Okay.
I looked up some information, you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to write it down. With that, any other matters this evening? Dr. Berdo, Sasha Mello, Mr. Yugna?
Very successful day of professional development. I'll just say that, but you heard about that already, so.
Yeah, thank you. Grace, Jacob, any other information, any others you want to share with committee? With the community?
Want to talk about your midterms? Kidding. Joe.
It's hard to read Jacob's face with a mask on.
He, he wants to, but Grace is telling him not to.
Yeah, so Grace is like, we want to go home. Stop. So Sarah, any other informational items?
No, not really. Everything is positive at the rec. The, everything's full speed ahead for the Tyson Tiara dance in February, so that's something positive to look forward to. Renee's doing a really great job at the, at the helm at the rec. Deb has stepped down and is part-time, so she's starting her retirement. So that's pretty much it with rec business and just the MIAA rewards. I'm sounding like a broken record. Babs did just send me the most recent report. I, I continue to take the classes here and there whenever I can sign up for them. And the, you know, we're satisfying as much as, you know, as much as we can, we're trying to satisfy everything. So I will share the report with the committee so that everyone can see sort of where we stand, just for their own information. Just a side note, because Babs Kelly does do a real lot for that MIAA program, and she's stepping down from the helm, I think, in the spring. So we don't know who's taking over, but I just wanted to give Babs a quick shout-out because she really is very, she's very conscientious and she really cares, and she does that job with her heart, for sure. So thanks to Babs for her management of that program.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting us know, and thank you to Babs for, for all the work that you've done, she's done. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I just thought of two important things that I probably should mention. Tomorrow evening, we are starting the screening for the borough principals, so we're bringing our committee together. And on Thursday evening, we have the parent focus group. So just two things on the calendar to be aware of.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Michelle?
Nothing more to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brent?
Nothing.
Okay, I've got two things. One is closure from la, from our last meeting. So we were looking for volunteers from the school committee to participate and to do principal searches. Sarah is participating in this, in the search for the prince, the new principal at the borough.